So what's secret to your force? That's what I want to know. How do you manage that? Prescription drugs.
All right, good evening and welcome to the special planning commission meeting of Tuesday, July 30th, 2019. Let's start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present in the flesh.
Commissioner Falgar. Here. Commissioner Reddick.
I'm here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Also here.
And Chairman.
Here.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you very much. Now we have a general public comment period. This is for items not on the agenda. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, the study session of the local coastal land use plan update. I don't have any speaker cards either for the public comment period or for the public hearing item on the local coastal land use plan update. So if you do wish to speak, please submit a green card. And if you wish to speak for general public comment, please stand up right now. Not seeing anybody closing the public comment period and we can move to our first and only public hearing item. Jill.
Good evening, Chair Holt, commissioners and community members. And we would like to quickly apologize for being a little bit delayed tonight and thank you for coming. We are very happy to be here to present the last chapter of your land use plan draft that you've been working on, the public works draft. As you know, I get to do this little overview before we start each study session and remind everyone in the room, this is not a decision making meeting. We continue to pay attention to potential conflicts of interest that individual commissioners may have. Under the political reform act, the commission can oversee general plan and local coastal program updates. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, individual commissioners may need to recuse themselves. Following public comments, when this item comes back to the commission for discussion, we request that individual commissioners acknowledge if there are any such sites. And in such case, we will arrange for the discussion to accommodate for the commissioner to leave the room for a bit. We don't anticipate that happening tonight, but if it does, let us know. We're at kind of a high level looking at infrastructure, so hopefully that can just keep on going. And we get to introduce our item. So first off, tonight we'll have a staff presentation regarding the chapter that is just delivered tonight and give an overview of that and take clarifying questions from the commissioners, public comment prior to commission discussion. And then this chapter, again, it completes the 2018-19 draft of the land use plan update. We will conclude the meeting with a review of next steps. And without further ado, Brittany will start with our review of the public works chapter.
Good evening. So the public works chapter, chapter three, ties together the material of chapter two development of the land use plan update draft and the build out projections contained in appendix B, which we reviewed at our last study session to assess the capacity and performance of our public works facilities for existing and anticipated development and to identify opportunities for sustainability and resilience improvements. The chapter focuses on our 2040 and maximum theoretical build out scenarios to draw conclusions on infrastructure needs over the life of this land use plan and to the unknown point of maximum build out. The infrastructure systems discussed in the chapter include water, sewer, storm water and circulation, as these systems are the most conducive to growth and development and the most relevant to coastal requirements. The public works chapter includes narrative to complement the build out projections in appendix B as we went over last, in June. To briefly review build out again, the projections are focused around three main parameters. Point in time with assessments for the existing condition, the 2040 build out scenario for the plan horizon and the maximum theoretical build out. Another parameter is land use type focusing around residential and non-residential land uses. And location differentiated by location inside or outside of the town center. This table summarizes the build out projections from appendix B and provides the basis for assessing current public infrastructure performance and anticipated needs. Under the existing condition, it is well known that vehicular traffic already presents a major infrastructure concern. Anticipated growth is focused in the town center where alternative modes of transportation are most feasible and accessible and where municipal water and sewer infrastructure already exist. Twenty years is a typical increment for anticipating major infrastructure upgrades as is supported by the 2040 build out scenarios. The maximum theoretical build out is, as we've mentioned, an extreme scenario of development that is unlikely to ever occur, but it does provide a long-term look at system capacity and needs. The rate of build out is also important to consider for its effect on public infrastructure demand. The city's measure D residential growth limitation imposes a one to one and a half percent annual maximum growth, but recent years have only seen a .7 percent annual residential growth. The persons per household factor also affects the number of allowable base units under measure D. The 2000 census shows 2.75 persons per household for Hafman Bay while current data indicates a lower 2.59. However, A-bag projections indicate that persons per household may increase to 2.9 by 2040, which would reduce the number of allowable base units under measure D. So with that build out background, we'll go over each of the infrastructure systems that this chapter covers, starting with our water system. The city's water provider is the Coese County Water District, who also serves part of the unincorporated mid-coast shown in the green area on the screen here. Coese County Water District, I'll refer to as CCWD. Their management plan, urban water management plan, excuse me, was most recently updated in 2015 and provides the foundation for the district's water supply planning and management. This plan is on a five-year cycle and will be updated again in 2020. This is the figure you will see in the public works chapter showing the CCWD service area as well as two small areas within the planning area in gray that is not served by CCWD. CCWD's supply comes from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission and surface water diversions from Pillar Cios Creek and the Denison Wells for a total of 1,000 million gallons per year, or MGY. The 2015 urban water management plan indicates a per capita daily use of 124 gallons, which produces a total demand of 600 million gallons per year, or 60% of the current supply. This leaves 400 million gallons per year for build out of Hafman Bay as well as the unincorporated areas of the mid-coast that is served by CCWD. The urban water management plan reports a 2020 target of 124 gallons per capita per day, but actual water use is actually closer to 100 gallons per capita per day due to increasing water fixture efficiency and ongoing conservation measures. For a conservative approach, the future water demand assessment assumes 110 gallons per capita per day for 2040 and 100 gallons per capita per day for maximum theoretical build out. So by considering the population projections for the entire service area, there is sufficient water supply for the 2040 build out scenario. And the maximum theoretical build out scenario is just short of the existing 1,000 million gallons per year supply. However, as existing water use is already at or near the 100 gallons per capita per day, it is likely that the future point of maximum build out will have an even lower per capita water use that can be fully served by the existing supply. New water supply sources such as recycled water facilities could also meet the projected demand of maximum theoretical build out. So although water supply is anticipated to meet projected demand, the water distribution system introduces a different constraint on the water system. The original coastal development permit for the Crystal Springs Pipeline Project, which is also known as the Crystal Springs Phase One, established 8,078 water connections to be used by priority land uses, non-priority land uses and affordable housing projects. When CCWD sought a coastal development permit to upgrade a section of this pipe known as the El Granada Pipeline, the Coastal Commission imposed conditions prohibiting any increase in water supply or water connections prior to improving the roadway capacity to an adequate level of service. At this time, the Coastal Commission defined the categories of water uses allowed to obtain priority and non-priority water connections. Priority users include public recreation, visitor serving, commercial, coastal development, industrial and agriculture. There is no mention of connections intended for affordable housing, 202 of which were remaining at the time of this appeal. This table summarizes the status of unused water connections in the entire service area as of today. Under the build out projections and growth limitations imposed on Hafman Bay and the unincorporated mid-coast, there are sufficient priority and priority connections to support new development anticipated through the 2040 plan horizon. However, it is under consideration of the mid-coast maximum theoretical build out projections as well, it is very likely that additional non-priority connections will be needed to serve market rate residential development and non-coastal dependent non-residential uses. So though the moral of the story is that there is sufficient water supply to serve the 2040 and the maximum theoretical build out, as well as sufficient water connections to serve the 2040 plan horizon, policies emphasize the need for monitoring and reserving the water distribution and supply system to serve priority uses as well as affordable housing before non-priority uses. So we're looking at a three-tier system of prioritizing what is reserved. First being coastal priority uses, including those defined by the coastal development permit appeal. Recreation, visitor serving, commercial, agriculture and coastal dependent industrial. Second tier, affordable housing. Third tier, non-priority uses, including residential and non-coastal dependent, excuse me, non-residential uses. So other policy considerations include water conservation to lead to additional supply from a lower gallon per capita per day water usage, consideration of other water supplies such as recycled water facilities and restrictions on private wells, allowing them for priority uses with restrictions on when they can be applied for, for non-priority development. And that brings us to the sewer system.
Thank you, Brittany. Good evening, Chair, commissioners, members of public. I'm going to talk a little bit about the sewer system. Our service provider, we have two service providers in the city of Hafman Bay area. Basically, we have south of Frenchman's Creek Road, which is the, sorry, south of Frenchman's Creek, which is the city of Hafman Bay's sanitary service area. And then we have Granada Community Services District just north of Frenchman's Creek. We have a joint powers authority with the sewer authority mid-coast, SAM for the shorter acronym, which covers the overall wastewater treatment plants as well as the IPS system, the intertie pipeline system. And the member agencies are the city of Hafman Bay, Granada Community Services District and the Montero Water and Sanitary District. We, the one other piece to this is that the oversight agency is the state regional water quality control board through the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that we have on file with the state. So this map shows the service providers. You can see where Frenchman's Creek is in the pink. Going towards the green in the north is where the Granada Services District takes over in the city limits as well as up through the unincorporated county in Marimar and El Granada. And everything south of Frenchman's Creek is essentially the Hafman Bay sanitary district service area. And there is a small area on the top right of the screen that is within our service district, although there aren't any connections currently at those locations. And then we have the SAM plant that's denoted in the star right off of Beth Cuny County Road. SAM capacity was most recently upgraded in 1995 as part of a settlement agreement and order from the regional water quality control board. The peak flows that were being treated were increased as far as capacity goes to 4 million gallons per day, of which the city of Hafman Bay has approximately 50% or 2 million gallons per day as far as the Hafman Bay service area. The way that the capacity is divided up is essentially the network of pipes in the ground. So the split between the three different districts is about 50% Hafman Bay service area, 30% Granada Services District area and 20% the Montero Water and Sewer District service area. There are two specific, there's two specific terms that I want to mention here. The peak dry weather flow and the peak weather flow. These are important indicators to consider as we talk about this section of the chapter in that these are the two flows that are most important as far as it comes to capacity and treatment capacity. So the peak dry weather flow is essentially a summarized hourly maximum rate in the dry season. And the peak wet weather is the same thing but for wet weather season. So it's the highest hourly flow of sewer flow during a wet weather period in that hour, in that specific hour. So the SAM's plant capacity has 4 million gallons per day of dry weather flow that they can accommodate, two of which is for the Hafman Bay service area. And then there's a 15 million gallon per day for peak wet weather flow, which using that same allocation, about seven and a half million gallons per day for the Hafman Bay service area. Here we have a table that shows our 2018 peak wet weather flow and peak dry weather flows. And then we go, using that data, we extrapolated 2040 population based on those two metrics. And then we have the maximum theoretical build out for those two metrics. Essentially, what we're looking at here is our peak wet weather flow and peak dry weather flow. The 2040 build out scenario, we are looking at being slightly over our peak dry weather flow, which is 2 MGD for the Hafman Bay area. Sorry, 2.1 for the Hafman Bay service area and 6.42, which is under the seven and a half MGD for peak wet weather flow. So under this scenario, we're very close as far as the 2040 population projections go. And then there are, as far as the Hafman Bay city limits, it's a little bit bigger because there's a portion of the Granada Community Services District that ties into that overall allocation. So as far as the 2040 goes, we're close on the dry weather and we're under the threshold for our capacity allocation for wet weather. And then as far as the maximum theoretical build out, we are over on both of those numbers as far as the Hafman Bay service area as currently projected. So we're looking at 2.66 for the Hafman Bay service area, which we have currently two, and 8.1 million gallons per day, which is essentially, we have seven and a half in that category. So as far as the maximum theoretical goes, we are exceeding our limits a little bit. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward in this presentation. So some of the sewer policy considerations that we need to consider here. The first and foremost is infiltration and inflow, or as we call it, INI for short. So what this does is this is flows of outside influences into our sewer system. So when we have large storm water events, large storm events, that goes into the inflow category where we're looking at holes in our system, illegal connections from residential units and other cross connections between our storm drain system and our storm sewer system. And so what ends up happening is we end up losing our capacity by about 20%. That is the amount of storm water that infiltrates and inflows into our pipes that ends up going to SAM treatment plant and gets treated as any other wastewater. So what we, and some of the policy considerations there, we'll touch on that. We have several projects in our capital improvement program that look at reductions in both inflow and infiltration through pipe repairs, through different types of testing methods to determine what types of cross connections are present so we can look at eliminating those. And so there are pieces there. We've also looked at the SAM plant's vulnerability. There are some specific capacity restrictions that go along with that. Specifically, the amount of capacity for treatments of the dry weather flow, which we recognize in our earlier table that we are exceeding that peak dry weather flow. So there are certain things that we can look at doing. Part of it being looking at capacity and recycled water applications as part of the sewer master plan, master plan process as we move forward. We are also looking at potential impacts from the geography of where the SAM plant is, being in a low-lying area. We have noted that there are, right now, that it does happen on certain occasions during certain storm events that we do get some minor flooding and with climate change and other considerations, that factor is going to increase. So that's something that we need to consider as we move forward in our feasibility studies for the SAM plant and future improvements. We have, there are private sewer systems as well, both for priority and non-priority. And I'll let Jill talk about that a little bit more. But there are some specific, there are some specific private sewer systems that we're looking at in a more detailed format. We are trying to discourage those kind of connections as far as the private sewer systems. I'm specifically thinking about. systems, and specifically thinking about septic tanks and leach fields types of systems, uh, where we are looking to discourage those and making it more feasible for connection to the overall system, uh, to the public system. And then, um, there are some, there's also some other, uh, priority reservations, there's three tiers, and I'll let Jill talk about that a little bit more in detail.
So similar to, uh, the water, uh, supply that Brittany already reviewed, uh, in the tiering that is actually very conveniently established with water connections for priority uses, affordable housing, um, and the non-priority uses, the Coastal Act requires, uh, that capacity is reserved for prior, priority Coastal Act uses. As you saw, for, for the sewer capacity, uh, we're, we're hitting the limits, uh, at the 2040 build-outs. So, the land use plan includes policies to establish appropriate reservations with the same tiering that you've already heard about for water, um, being consistent all the way through the plan for all of the systems, and so, so far as they're applicable. Water and sewer are, are the two primary systems. Um, just for scale, in, uh, the 20, or, excuse me, the 1996 land use plan, I, I think about 60,000 million gallons, uh, was reserved, per day was reserved for, uh, priority uses. So you can see that was, that was a pretty small slice of, uh, what the total capacity was. We haven't set an amount yet, we're, we're looking at how, how the whole 2040 build-out, uh, comes together with regards to priority uses, and we think that there's a lot of, uh, consideration that the Planning Commission needs to make, um, following public comment on the capacity of the other systems, and where we're looking at how, just how much of the priority uses can be accommodated in, in, in the land use plan as a whole, so that we can determine how much is needed for this particular, uh, public works facility. Next slide, I'm gonna start this, and then we'll get it back over to our city engineer. The stormwater system is the third, uh, public works, uh, facility that is looked at in this chapter. Uh, that is new to the land use plan, we haven't had that covered in, in a public works chapter before. Now, that said, this, uh, topic crosses over so many other categories, it's related to coastal hazards and to natural resources in particular. Uh, there's a, uh, hydrology and water quality section in the natural resources chapter, which is chapter six, that, uh, policies in that chapter are complementary to the, uh, policies in the public works chapter. Uh, the focus here is really on the infrastructure of the stormwater system, as opposed to, uh, some of the other kinds of factors about it in terms of a, a natural resource, but we do try to cross-link those two thoughts. And, of course, the development chapter also is very mindful of, uh, stormwater management and, uh, has, has quite a few, uh, land use policy, as well as land use designation requirements that relate to, uh, stormwater. So, I'm going to go ahead and let Maz go back and, and work on the technical part of this.
Thank you, Jill. Um, just a little overview, we have approximately nine watershed areas that have been designated in this, in the city limits, and I have a map that will show you, um, this, uh, the storm sewer, stormwater system covers a number of main main drainage infrastructures, including closed pipes, culverts, uh, ditches and other watercourses. And there's also the green infrastructure component, that is something that's new, that's coming, coming to the table through different policies and requirements from the state, uh, which looks at watercourses, uses of open space areas, and, and other, uh, more green, we like to call green infrastructure versus the more traditional gray, which is pipe concrete. So here's a, here's our map of the nine different areas, um, they've, essentially, we're looking at the different, uh, watersheds where the natural, uh, stormwater would flow, and that, that was the, uh, way that this was, um, uh, divided up within the storm drain master plan, um, that was, uh, adopted in, uh, 2017, 2017. The storm, the stormwater sewer, uh, the stormwater system capacity, uh, again, we're looking at the 2016 Storm Drain Master Plan, that was a document that was, uh, previously approved by the city council, identifying different watershed, uh, maintenance and restoration priorities. Uh, one of the next, uh, pieces that's coming, uh, from that is a, uh, list of specific projects with, uh, cost estimates to supplement our capital improvement program. And so that's another piece that's coming up. And then, a huge component of our stormwater system is this, the new, uh, green infrastructure, uh, plan that's moving forward. This one, this, uh, this item was actually, uh, we, we, we took it to city council, um, there's been some discussions over the last couple of years as the planning, as the state mandates have come through. Uh, we did a, a brief update and introduction to this topic in, I believe, May of this year to the city council, talking about what exactly the green infrastructure plan will entail, um, looking at different opportunities for green infrastructure in public projects, um, and also partnerships with, with private development, um, where, uh, green infrastructure may not be feasible. What, that's actually gonna be a continuing conversation, we're planning to have a presentation of our, uh, of our specific plan to the city council on August 20th of the city council meeting, uh, where we'll discuss this in more detail, uh, with, with that group, and we'll go forward with our requirements for submitting to the state. Um, and again, the gra, the green infrastructure plan, the big concept there is really transitioning away from the gray infrastructure, which is concretes, pipes in the ground, going to more open channel flow, uh, bio swells and bio retention, and, um, groundwater recharge. So the, the sort, the policy considerations for this particular piece, again, the green infrastructure is going to be a large component of this, um, as well as the green infrastructure plan, um, we have, uh, the, the capital improvement program integrates a GI program into that, looking at opportunities to supplement our, uh, capital improvement projects with green infrastructure as we move forward. Uh, we look at watershed restorations, um, development of the town center, uh, looking at specific localized flooding, and of course, our aging infrastructure, um, through various projects and, and programs. With that, I'll pass it back to Jill, to the circulation system.
Thank you, Maz. This is the fourth, uh, system that is assessed in this, uh, chapter, and just reminding everybody that quite a bit has already been studied and put forth regarding the circulation system in chapter five, Coastal Access and Recreation. So in the public works chapter, we're taking a real, um, focused view on Highway One and 92, the primary, uh, structure of all that has to do with getting in and out of town at, at that level. So, you'll also note, um, this has been going, uh, we've been doing a lot of concurrent planning to the land use plan updates. So, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, similar to the green infrastructure plan that's coming forward, uh, that plan has wrapped up, and it's coming to you at the end of August with its environmental document. So planning that was, is done with that, as well as looking at our county plan informed, uh, the overall approach to circulation in Halfman Bay. And remembering that we have allocated a, an approach with the town boulevard concept for Highway One, um, we're, we're gonna dig into some of the performance numbers, and you'll, you'll see how that, that is working. Um, alright. I think I missed a slide, so I'm sorry. Go ahead and, let's keep on truckin'. So, uh, traffic modeling has been, uh, prepared for this, uh, first set of model runs, we intend to, uh, do quite a few more later, uh, but in this first set, uh, the CCAG VTA, that's the City County Association of Governments for Sematell County, and the Valley Transportation Authority for Santa Clara County, have a, uh, model that they share, it's a two-county model, and it takes inputs, uh, from all of the jurisdictions in the county to a 2040 build-out for all of them, and then also acknowledges the growth around it, uh, through A-BAG's 2040 growth projections. So, this is a, a good model for us to use for major roadways. We wouldn't use this model for, uh, studying a, a specific intersection in Halfman Bay that isn't, uh, really part of that big infrastructure system. So, uh, this was, uh, run with our 2018 existing conditions, as well as the 2040 build-out, uh, scenario, and the maximum theoretical build-out scenario. And, and the factors that we were looking at, the, the performance measures were level of service on, uh, roadway segments and delay, and what we, uh, hmm? I don't know yet. See, I haven't practiced my presentation, as you can see. So, I do want to, um, people wanna know about vehicle miles traveled, and that has not been modeled yet. Vehicle miles traveled will really serve a different purpose for this plan, and it will not give us any information about the performance of Highway One, Highway 92. And it will help us understand, uh, the, uh, greenhouse gas emissions associated with the plan, and whether or not our plan is going to be supportive of, uh, trip reductions, but for, for what we're trying to do with this public works chapter is understand infrastructure capacity in the city and around the city. So that's why we chose these two, level of service, of course, is, is the, those grades, A through F, and I'll talk about what delay is in just a minute, so go ahead. Thank you. So, in the draft chapter, you will see a fuzzy version of this map, and it includes a, uh, little bit of a focus on the PM peak hour, and we were, we're highlighting that here because we think the PM peak hour is probably the most relatable thing for everybody who lives in town, um, if you're, if you're out and about on the road, um, and you're going to the grocery store, or whatever else you are doing with your commute, or, or your child's commute, um, just about everybody gets to experience this. Of course, the weekend peak is heavier, we understand that, the AM peak is not a cup of tea either, and we also understand that. And we have numbers for all three of those in, in your draft, uh, public works chapter. So, there's a table, um, that, folks, I think you'll wanna spend a little time looking at, table 39, where we're, uh, presenting for three different roadway segments. So this is, it's, the attempt is to break this down to be quite, uh, approachable and a way to really, uh, be able to visualize, imagine what this is like. So the segments are Highway One North, so that's Highway One between, uh, Highway 92 and the northern city limits area, Highway One South, which is Highway, uh, at Highway 92 and Miramonte's Point Road, and then Highway 92 itself, uh, heading east to the city limits. So, just, just three segments, and there's a lot of other things that we can model later, but this was, this was getting us started. So, of no surprise, Highway One North is in the F condition as a segment, as a roadway segment, for all the scenarios, including the scenario of, uh, 2018, um, which was our, our base development for AM peak hour, PM peak hour, and, uh, weekend peak. Now, uh, Highway One South, it was the best performing segment, and I think most of us can, uh, agree that that's so, although it definitely has its, its moments when, when there's some significant backups on it, but it actually maintains, uh, level of service D for, uh, some of these conditions. Highway One, or, excuse me, Highway 92 specifically degrades from, um, E's into F's through these, uh, scenarios, as they're stepping up with more and more development. And, it seems like, I, you, you could get the impression that that's the one that's getting the worst, because it's going from E to F, but we're really concerned about Highway One North, because even though, uh, F is appearing to be the same grade across the board, there are many different flavors of level of service F, and that's why we, uh, are presenting also an analysis of delay. So, you're going to see delay factors, and I'd like to just explain what they are, and hopefully, the explanation and definition in the chapter is helpful as, as well. But the way that it's, it works is, we start with a, an assumption about free flow, free flow traffic. So, if we took Highway One North from 92 to the northern city limits in the middle of the night, or before the AM, uh, commute period starts, so we're talking about level of service B, the lights are synced, you can, uh, continue to proceed at the speed limit, there aren't a lot of cars turning on and off the road, and it's, it's a breeze. So we start with that, and we call it a one, that's, that's the basic factor. Then, delay is, uh, calculated for the other conditions. So for example, in the case of Highway One North, for the, uh, PM peak, uh, existing condition, the delay factor is almost three. So, that means that it would take you three times longer to get, um, across that segment during the PM peak hour than it would during the free flow condition. Now, I know everybody in the room can imagine a, a day when it took you an hour, um, or, you know, they're all over the place. This is just gonna be a very much of a blended, uh, summary of what it is. We also, and, these are model outputs from the CCAG model, our traffic consultant also used, uh, Google Maps, uh, data for the existing condition as well, to, uh, look at how it correlated to how their model was working, so some of those real-time, kind of big data things that you can get out of that. They're similar, in some cases, the delay came out a little bit longer, in other cases it was shorter, but I was comfortable that we were, um, presenting a ballpark, it's not gonna be exactly what your experience is, but it gives you an order of magnitude. So, uh, just to keep on the Highway One North, uh, for the 2040 condition, it, it pops up to almost four and a half times, and in the maximum theoretical build-out, uh, it's almost six. So, this was done for, uh, North, South, and 92. I want to note that the Highway One South delay factors, uh, I'm, I'm not completely comfortable with how they came out, and we are gonna run, run them some more, uh, to, to improve the sensitivity, but we're going to wait before we do more runs, because we know this process is probably going to, uh, end up in some changes to the draft land use plan, will be, uh, possibly affecting the build-out. And, our timing's great, possibly, because the traffic model that we were using is going to be, uh, updated with the latest A-BAG numbers, so the background growth will be, uh, as current as we can possibly get it, if, um, if we're able to, uh, get into that in a few months. So, just, just some notes about what was modeled, uh, we would love to get feedback about what you see, and, um, I can meet with anybody who wants to come into City Hall and, and go through it, 'cause there's a lot, there's a lot in here. Alright. So, circulation policy considerations. Did it freeze? I know how to fix it now. It's liberating, alright. So, obviously highway capacity is, is something of note, and the town boulevard approach is straightforwardly saying, we, we don't intend to make Highway One and two, two lanes in each direction through Halfman Bay. The intent, uh, throughout this process of updating this plan, has been for Highway One to be tamed, safer, prettier, more accommodating to multiple modes, and suited to the small town living environment that is so valuable to, to Halfman Bay. We also know that when we add lanes and capacity, that, uh, there's the elasticity of, uh, that there's the elasticity of demand. We would expect it to fill right up with more folks. And we've seen that. This is not making it up. We've seen that happen all over the country, but certainly in the Bay Area when roads are widened and there was so much demand for that particular route. Or frankly, here, so much demand to come to Half Moon Bay, especially on the weekend. Emergency access for both emergency vehicles and for evacuation routes is really important on the coast side. You don't have a lot of resources here. You need to be able to get out and to have your vehicles come in and out. So you will see policies about that. But really, quite significantly is community character, which is really highly relevant to Public Works, believe it or not, because we talked about it quite a bit in some of the other chapters. But Public Works is supposed to be supporting coastal access. And it's supposed to be reserved and supporting priority Coastal Act uses. What we note is, from the perspective of coastal access, Highway 1 is such a significant constraint. But the primary component of its scale in the built environment with the setting here, that is the leading draw for visitors to Half Moon Bay. And that's been recognized throughout your planning processes as what Half Moon Bay really offers for the coastal zone visitor. So this is a tricky one because we really aren't offering a way to make those Fs go away. And so you're going to see some of these model runs coming through and do some thinking about what they mean, which is why we brought the delay for you. So it's a little bit more, you have more of a look at what it is as opposed to just the letter grades. Let's see. Well, let's finish up. We can, we're going to have plenty of time to fill questions. There's a lot in each of these sections, and all of us are happy to work on that. So in conclusion on this chapter, we acknowledge that there are a lot of other Public Works types of facilities. They aren't the primary focus of the Coastal Act, but they are really important to the city. So we just want to be clear that they aren't forgotten. Typically, they are found in other portions of a general plan. So for example, the safety element or the open space and conservation element with solid waste, you know, things like that. So if it's not in here and you're worried about it and you wonder what is the city doing to plan for that, ask us about it, and we'll show you where it is or where it's supposed to be as we keep doing the rest of our planning. Overall, this chapter presented a plan for buildout and public facilities that not only worked at Half Moon Bay, but also the Mid Coast. We were really careful to include their buildout in our analysis, especially insofar as these areas are linked. There's numerous overlapping districts. And the demand for services is, of course, everything's shared. So from CCWD's service area, the SAM treatment plant, the Granada Community Service Districts, and of course, the roads. So that was very important. The Seminole County Local Coastal Program was certified in 2013. And so we were using buildout data from their plan as well as buildout data that was included in the different master plans that have come up tonight, the sewer master plan in particular, and the urban water management plan that CCWD has to update every five years. So we also note that modeling is going to have to evolve over time. The Mid Coast and Half Moon Bay cannot control the growth of the visitor population, per se. This could really affect the modeling factors, which some of them are based on per capita for residents. They take into account visitors and all the other uses that are in town. But there are policies that you'll see in this Public Works chapter that are a little bit different than what are in the 1996 document for updating, monitoring, validating the models, and being very judicious about that. The policies for reserving capacity for priority uses in the three tiers, there's a master policy to make sure that's applied throughout, and then specific policies related to sewer capacity and water supply. We conclude, before you get to your clarifying questions. The 2040 buildout looks good. It looks plausible. And I frankly think it will take longer than 2040 to get to those numbers. But we're trying to be really conservative and careful when we do this kind of work. Past that, different systems really start to get strained. Sewers first, well, not really. The roadways first, as already happened. Sewer is next. Water supply is really pretty impressively ample, but water connections are limited. And water connections, to be granted, more of those, the incremental phasing of capacity from one system to another needs to be considered in whether or not the other systems have enough capacity. So we would expect the limitations on sewer to actually affect the ability to get more water connections later. So there's a lot of relationships from one system to another. This planning horizon to 2040, completing this plan, we hope over the next few months to a year, and getting it to the Coastal Commission, is really going to be an invitation for the city to think very seriously about what the end game is for Half Moon Bay and what the actual capacity is in maintaining the town the way that you're seeking for it to be. So we've enjoyed working hard on this chapter, and particularly with our subcommittee. So Vice Chair Benjamin and Commissioner Hernandez have been incredibly supportive. And we also note this is a draft. We know we're going to get lots of feedback, as we have with the other chapters. And we learn something every day from everybody in the room. So thank you for that. And we're happy to continue now with the study session with your clarifying questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Jill. And thanks to the subcommittee members, Vice Chair Benjamin and Chairman Hernandez for a lot of work. I'll just note, for the benefit of the public, this is a study session. There's no decisions that are being made tonight. We actually just got this material tonight, or at least the three of us who aren't on the subcommittee. So we haven't had the opportunity to dive really deep into this. So I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions. And I know tonight won't be the only opportunity to provide those questions. So with that, open it up to any clarifying questions that the commission may have. Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you, Maz, Brittany, Jill. Great presentation. Thank you for the great presentation. From the presentation, it appears that we have enough water as long as the 1 million, what is it, the MGDY, what did you call it? MGY holds true. But I'm under the impression that there's some question as to whether or not the amount of water available may change in the next five to 10 years. Is that fair?
So the majority of CCWD's water supply, 800,000 gallons, or million, 800,000, million gallons per year, oh my God, is through the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation, okay, Authority. And so they are a Basca member. And Basca's last negotiation was 2009. And it's a 25-year contract and agreement, and it comes up in 2034. So you've got some sense of confidence, certainly through there. It is a supply assurance. It's not a guarantee. We would expect it to be similar to what it is. But we have to watch what's going on with droughts and what's going on with water demand in other parts of the Basca service area where we've got other cities that are really mandated through regional planning requirements to do significant density around transit stations and things like that. So there's, it's going to be an interesting conversation when that starts to come forward. But it's a great question.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, Maz, from the recycled water perspective, how much demand does a recycle, a comprehensive recycled water project have the ability to take off of impact to the sewer system and the water supply? Do you have a sense of, directionally, how important that could be to the city? Other than it's just great not to pour fresh water onto a golf course?
Sure. It's hard to specify exactly how much could be captured and reused as far as recycled water. I mean, there's different levels of treatment that could be made. So it would be subject to that. I think certainly we can look at our wet weather flow and seeing that 20%. If we can capture, at least recapture some of that inflow that's coming into our system from the stormwater and use that as recycled water, that would be something that would be beneficial to the community, especially as we look at, you know, long-term uses of water and the potential for, you know, these cycles of droughts and abundance of rain. So depending on what we're, I think realistically looking at it, we might be looking at about 20, 30% of the amount of water that goes through the SAM treatment plant, just ballpark. And then from there, there's, depending on the type of treatment and where the water would be diverted to, it could change a little bit here and there.
Is it fair to say that if we reduce the wet weather maximum load on the sewer system, even with our current infrastructure, we're much less likely to have the kinds of issues with spillage that we've had in the past?
That's very fair. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Why didn't we include weekend delay in the numbers? I saw weekday delay, but I didn't see weekend delay.
They weren't able to model it accurately enough for me to put the numbers out. We'll try to get that. We would assume it would be worse than the PM peak.
We all would. We'd like to get a document of that. So the only other, oh. When is the last time the coastside water district provided a public report on its obligation to provide emergency water supply? That 8 million gallons, is there any kind of consistent public reporting there?
We'll check and get that back to you.
Okay. And then Maz, don't you have a magic hat that can make all those Fs go away? Because I got to tell you, every time I have dinner with somebody, the topic of conversation is what's in it for me and what are we going to do to fix the traffic? That's what I hear my friends and neighbors telling me about. So I just, I know you probably don't have a magic hat, but big picture, is there anything in this document that we need to add to make it easier for you, as a traffic engineer, to alleviate traffic, to make it more manageable?
At some point, at some point, there are, when you load the traffic system with a certain number of vehicles, at some point, regardless of what operational incremental improvements you can make, it's going to be really hard to make any meaningful reduction in time when it comes to the transportation system. You could look at adding capacity, certainly. But then again, we're limited to our specific geographic location and the larger scope of that, you know, how far do we want to push that, that part of it? Now, one thing that, I mean, from the state level that's happening, Joel mentioned this a little bit. So finally, from a state perspective, they've started to realize that the more demand and capacity you add to a system, the more people will tend to use it. It's human nature to do so. And so this change to VMT, vehicle miles traveled, it's a major change in the way that we're looking at transportation impacts. We're going from a completely different baseline of what our concerns are. If you think about it from level of service, we're looking at time. How much time are we sitting in our cars? How much time does it take to get through this intersection? Now, this new metric, we're looking at distance. How long is it going to, how far do I have to travel to get to the grocery store? How far do I have to travel to get to entertainment? So that in itself is going to have changing impacts to our transportation demands. And the more we can focus our policy on alternative modes of transportation, I think would be the best, really trying to reduce the amount of vehicles on the roadway.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. Reddick?
Thank you. Well, thank you all for all the obvious hard work that's gone into this. I can imagine how much fun that was, some parts of this. You all mentioned this regarding water and sewer. But kind of quickly, could you just recap for me, please, what the methodology is for the maximum buildouts? I presume that in the case of CCWD, it's not just based on the Half Moon Bay city projected population. It includes the entire service area of CCWD?
That's right. And it includes unincorporated Merrimar, Princeton, and Al Granada, the entire service area.
And did those numbers come from CCWD and from SAM, respectively?
I'm going to look at the sources on our tables, if you want to keep going.
Okay. Maz, do you know off the top of your head the elevation of the SAM plant? I know it's less than 100 feet.
Yeah, I think it's about, I think it's about, if I remember correctly, it's about 70 feet or so.
Oh, that much.
Through the chair. I want to be careful because I live nearby the SAM plant. So with respect to comments on if it's specific to that location, I want to have a chance to trot out of the room. I will mention that I live at about 25 feet.
I ask that for the general purpose of asking what the level of urgency is that the city feels about the future of sea level rise and the vulnerability of the SAM plant. I don't know whether there are estimates of sea level rise that are, where the science is solid enough that you folks are relying on that, or is it still evolving?
I would say, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say that there are certain, there are certain things that we are absolutely having to consider more as we move forward. You know, these peak weather flows, for example, that has a lot to do with historical rainfall data, for example. I think overall, when we're talking about sea level rise and climate change, I know that the county has this new Sea Level Rise Resiliency Committee that's starting up in the near future. And so with that, we would be looking at large-scale projections and modeling as far as what impacts we're looking at. As we move forward and collect more information and data and projections, we'll have a better understanding of that. But it's certainly something that we need to keep a closer eye on as we go through with our planning processes as well as any operational improvements to the plan itself.
So I'm guessing, based on that, that as far as the 2040 planning horizon is, that this chapter, at this stage at least, doesn't call that out as a major problem?
It does, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So I'm not going to talk about that particular facility, but I'm going to make a couple notes about some of the low-lying areas in Half Moon Bay. And so we do acknowledge that they are taking on some water during major storm events already. already. And in different combinations of sea level rise with a 100-year storm event, there's certainly water, water coming forward. For example, there's some modeling for some of the lower portions of Miramar at the north end of town where that's happening and other places where our creeks go out into, into the ocean. I've, I've got the tables up, so I can now remember exactly what I did. And for the future water demand, the sources for the population projections for that model, the Urban Water Management Plan had 2020 population projections that it, it based its model on. Almost every other model in this chapter starts with 2018 because it comes from our data, but I couldn't suss out the county, the unincorporated area's population from their land use plan or any other source. So we used the Urban Water Management Plan's estimate for San Mateo County's population in 2020. And in 2040, we used, let's see here, 24. The 2040 and maximum theoretical build-out populations, of course, for Half Moon Bay, we used our own analysis. And then for unincorporated San Mateo County, as I already said, the 2020 and the 2040, we used the Urban Water Management Plan. But for their, for the maximum theoretical build-out condition, we used the San Mateo County Local Coastal Programs maximum theoretical build-outs. We used the, the data source that was the closest possible to the agency that was of concern. The sewer was a little bit different. The 2018 population estimates, and of course, these are, none of the districts have the same boundaries, so you get to deal with a lot of different ways. 2018 from, this was from the 2016 Half Moon Bay Sewer System Master Plan. We didn't use our own 2018 number because it was just, it was a little bit different from theirs. It's not a material significant difference. And then we used 2040 maximum theoretical build-out and our land use plan build-out analysis to, to get at the rest of it for our portion of the Granada Community Service Area and of course for the rest of town, which is in the Half Moon Bay service area.
Yeah, thank you for that. And similarly, Joel, in the circulation, the A-BAG numbers that go into the model, they're, it's, I guess, a blend of our projected increase in traffic as well as what must be a gradually increasing regional circulation figures from A-BAG?
Yes, and, and, yes and more. We, there's a couple, I'm worried about getting, I could talk way too long about this. We double-checked the baseline for the model for Half Moon Bay. The model that they're running right now came from, our understanding is it came from the A-BAG Projections 13 document that had projections to 2015 to 2040 in particular. And so the 2015 projections were the baseline for the existing condition in that model and they get extrapolated up to be a 2018 number. However, when we looked at the, the guts of the model for Half Moon Bay's traffic analysis zones, we didn't think the numbers were right and we trued them to our plan. They were too low and they would've performed better than they should have. So we, we actually changed Half Moon Bay's baseline. We didn't change anybody else's baseline. That model goes to 2040 and in my opinion, it's very good for the rest of the county because the projections, there's a lot more work that goes on with the areas that are higher growth through A-BAG's modeling that they do. They've, they've not been true to what's gone on in Half Moon Bay for a few years. In fact, they're under, undercounting what, what's happening here. So we had to find some other sources and ways of doing this. And everyone, we tried really hard to make sure everything is sourced, but it brings up the point of what you're seeing in the table in the circulation section. So the 2018 data, that's all true in time to the same data set. The 2014, 2040 as well, which includes the city's 2040 build-out estimate, that's in this chapter. Maximum theoretical build-out is a different case and there's a, there's a note on the, on the table about this. It includes the city's maximum theoretical build-out, but A-BAG and any traffic model that we can get our hands on doesn't go past 2040 and it's hard for us to make assumptions about what's going on around us. For a future model, we may put a growth factor on everybody around us, but it's hard to know how far out to do it. I've been talking to our, our traffic consultant about it. It's, it's tricky. So I'm glad you're asking all of this because we, we spent a lot of time working on these details and we're, if you wanna talk more to me later about it, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I, I guess that level of service and delay, you're talking about the, the worse direction, right? So, so Highway 1 North AM, we're talking about southbound. Highway 1 North PM, we're talking about northbound? Because there obviously would be a, a big difference. I don't have any other questions at the moment.
Great.
Commissioner Polgar?
So I, I thank you very much. That was, that was great. Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. That was very helpful, a lot to take in. So I'm, I'm still absorbing. I, I did have some questions about the, the stormwater system. I appreciate incorporating that into this section. And my questions were more kind of thinking about how it integrates with where stormwater is kind of touched upon and elsewhere in other chapters. I think it's in the, it's in Natural Resources, I think slightly in Hazards with the flooding as well. So, and I, my, I'll tell you what I, I'm seeing here and maybe you can kind of tell me if I've got it right. I'm seeing that this is kind of trying to provide the big picture watershed scale policy direction and that the devil, the details, those types of things are in some of the other chapters. So, you know, what's happening with parcel level, for, for instance, that that's captured elsewhere. And then another part of this question is how you, I know that one of the policy considerations, I think there was a bullet on, for the section was, there were a couple things. One is, one was restoration. And I'd be interested to see, get your perspective on where in the policies we should be looking for the restoration kind of direction or directive for stormwater, because I think, I see that as a, a good opportunity to divert or reduce future costs with active restoration now. I can see that it being just a much lower cost approach overall. And then I think the other, oh, whoops. There was something else that was, and another one, but may, I'll, I'll follow up, but I'll let you, sorry, I'll let you go ahead.
All right. So on your first question, yes, those stormwater policies are also found in Chapter 6, Natural Resources, Chapter 7, Coastal Hazards, as well as Chapter 2, Development. So we, we have a complete book now, so you can read everything side by side, see how it all intertwines and plays out together. But yes, we were trying not to be duplicative of what the other chapters address and give the high-level watershed assessment. Restoration, we also address in Chapter 6. The Storm Drain Master Plan also lays out those priorities for, six and seven? Six and seven, thank you. The 2016 Storm Drain Master Plan also lays out the priorities for watershed restoration as Maz mentioned. So that could be addressed in further detail if you'd like to discuss that in this chapter, but again, we were trying not to be duplicative.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. So I have the luxury of having been spending time with this for a while, so a lot of my questions have, I've had a chance to ask and I'm impressed with my colleague's ability to quickly absorb and find the salient points, so I feel really stupid for taking so long to find a lot of them. But there are a couple of things that I want to try to get clarity on as I hear the presentation. I am struck by the interconnection between these resources and our ability to use them and not exhaust them. I would like to start by talking a little bit about rain, because in the past, our models of rainfall have had this, I think the technical term for them is isopovial curves that say the amount of rainfall is some combination of this much intensity for this long. And we have something we would call a 10-year storm event or a 25 or a 50 or even 100-year storm event. Am I being heard? Is, am I loud enough?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, good. Thank you. My, my understanding from all of the studies I've seen pertaining to rainfall is that we are still using that. And my, my perception from climate science changes is that a lot of those models seem to be in need of a change because we have periods of prolonged drought and we have atmospheric rivers that exaggerate some of the heavy events. And so my question is, is our, it's not, it's not the way the analysis is working, but is this analysis sensitive to the change in the way the rainfall is falling and, or not falling as a result of climate change? Or is our analysis robust enough to accommodate that?
I'll take a stab at that one. You're, you're right, Commissioner Benjamin, in the most part, the, the models are looking at more historical data and using that metric to try to, to project what the intensity in rainfall would be moving forward. I think as we move forward with more information, with more funding available for climate change, that is going to be something that we'll need to change. Our Storm Drain Master Plan, we, it was, although it was completed in 2016, it, it's not a completed final document. This is a master plan that's intended to be updated as, as things move forward. And I think that's one of the main areas where we would need to consider looking at it more closely, is that we're looking at these metrics from a historical perspective where we have data for about 150 years. We, and obviously, we have made some changes to our environment moving forward, so there, there's gonna be, you know, more highs and more lows. And so our, our, our approach to the model will have to take a closer look at what that's going to entail for us, not just from a rainfall perspective, but also from a sea level rise perspective, because obviously that impacts our system as well.
Absolutely. And thank, thank you, that's a, that's a helpful and encouraging answer. The idea that we can update our understanding of what's going on as we have an understanding of what's going on is, that's a big win. And I hope that's also true of our understanding of how we use the, our estimates of the way floods occur in town. One of my favorite illustrations that I'm really hoping we'll be able to update is the flood rate insurance map for the center of town, which shows, that panel shows a really nice, clear flood plain on Pilositos Creek going all the way down to the confluence with Arroyo Leone. And then it disappears as though there's nothing, right? And that's a really good, you know, it's, and I know we're going to be addressing that, finding some way to address that. Are there other maps that you look at and say, that just doesn't seem right, right now, that we, you know, that are just crazy?
Yeah, I definitely, I, Joel shared that map with me and it really seemed odd that it had no flood, there was no flooding potential. I, I think certainly there are, I don't know if there's anything else that comes into my mind specifically, but that was one, that seemed like it was, needed some work and so...
Sure. And so, and with respect to the change in our understanding of the rain, my guess, actually, I don't know this, so this is really a question. The, the INI that enters our septic sewer system is, you know, it's coming through leaks, there's a certain rate at which it can come in. I don't know if the hydraulic pressure from increased flows is gonna make that worse or maybe it's gonna flow in at the same rate, but it'll be flowing longer because the groundwater is saturated for a longer period of time. But there's potential for our understanding of the isopovial rain events to change our understanding of the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant's peak wet weather flows. Is that true?
That's true. And, you know, one of the, and one of our challenges as far as our ongoing maintenance of our system is to reduce that. So right now, we're estimating about 20% INI. Realistically, we wanna be under 10%. That's, that's an industry standard that we're trying to strive for.
Okay, so I'm, for once, I'm gonna stop talking about storm drainage. I wanna ask about circulation. My, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we all think we're traffic engineers when we do this, so I get to act like I think that. In, in queuing theory, there's an, there's a counterintuitive principle that in a complex network of queues, which you can sort of view a traffic system like ours as, if you expand the capacity of one, of, of an unfortunate choice of what to expand, then you actually reduce the performance of the system. You can actually reduce the throughput of the system by improving the capacity of a particular component that wasn't the bottleneck, because what it will, the effect is that it saturates the bottleneck, right? And I'm thinking that in our traffic system, where we have two-to-ones, we, those represent bottlenecks and places where the capacity might aggravate the demand at the bottlenecks has the potential to worsen our, our traffic performance, our transit times. Is that, am I thinking about this the right way?
You, you are, you are to a certain extent, definitely with the, with, with respect to the queuing. There are other components to our circulation element, such as safety and, and delay that we look at. So although the, I understand where you're coming from, there are certain requirements for the state highway system, for example. You know, where we're at an intersection, singleized intersection, for example, we are required by Caltrans standards to go to a two-lane minimum in each direction. So in theory, that I agree with you, but there are other factors such as safety that we have to take into consideration when we're looking at that. But yeah, you know, without looking at the larger network, where that impact shifts by doing some different types of projects, it's important to understand that, at that bigger picture. And I think that's what our model run, the intent was, to look at it from a high level, these three larger bite sizes of 92, one Highway 1 North and Highway 1 South, to look at it from a bigger picture and incorporate in the model the improvements that we have to date and the newer improvements coming online. And that's certainly something we'll, we'll be tweaking as, as we go through different iterations moving forward.
I see. And then la, last question. We did talk, you talked about the green infrastructure and the services that it would provide. And it's clear how it acts as a resource, a form of public works and makes sense in the context of this chapter. There's also sort of a greenhouse gas service that some green infrastructure can provide. And I'm, I'm thinking that part of that becomes part of our, a separate document about greenhouse gases. Do you think that we have addressed that issue sufficiently, you know, for the purposes of the Coastal Act in this document and that some of this will inform that other document? Or do you think the Coastal Act demands more of... Or do you think the Coastal Act demands more about that? That's, that's not a, meant to be a leading question. I really don't know.
Yeah. Brittany, Brittany just reminded me, we do have a climate action plan that we're, we'll be working on and there's going to be some outreach to the community in the next few months. And next year, that'll be a major focus. And I know that'll be something that'll be talked about there. I'll let Jill talk about whether, how, what other documentation that we have and where we are showing those, those numbers and reductions.
So once we complete and really firm up the build-out of this plan, the traffic model runs for the VMT will be completed. And an assessment of greenhouse gas production can then be done for the plan as a whole. Circulation, of course, is the primary producer, but we can also model some of the green infrastructure components as carbon sinks. And we intend to, well, we're going to have to prepare those studies to go with the plan when we submit it to the Coastal Commission for their review. We're, we're still trying to understand what the Coastal Act's requirements are around this topic. It's real clear that the general plan and the conservation element needs to cover this. And we, we have that in a draft form and then, of course, the climate action plan will inform that with some, some of the technical data. So it's happening all around your, your LCP.
Thank you, and thank you for your forbearance with my stuff.
So just, just one question that, that I actually know the answer to, but just, I guess for the benefit of the public and just, just asking this. Now, we're looking at the Public Works chapter and, and I'm struck by the fact that there's a significant part of our public works system and our circulation system here on the coast that's not included in here. And that's trails, pedestrian facilities and other facilities that I would say would fall under the Public Works umbrella. I know those are captured in other chapters, but can you just speak to that real quick?
That's a hard one. What's that? Right. We, we made a, a choice that those, those facilities are so important for coastal access that they needed to be in that chapter. So there's, there's a lot of policy in Chapter Five for alternate modes, trails, of course, that's also coastal access and recreation is in that chapter, so there's a linkage between the two. So I think what we, we should go back and do now that this is, all the chapters are done, is make sure everything landed in the right place and they connect together adequately and nothing is given short shrift. So if you're not seeing it, then we, we can discuss it. But we made that call pretty early on and one of the reasons why we did was we had so much fresh community input from both the bicycle and pedestrian master plan outreach as well as the parks master plan outreach, that we were just ready to write all, all of that stuff right then. But if more things have evolved since then and we need to revisit that, that's what your second draft is going to be about.
So yeah, and my concern is just, you know, public works sometimes seems to take a higher priority over things like coastal access, maybe in the, the public's mind or some others is, you know, hey, we need to fix the roads before we provide for coastal access and that type of thing. So I just want to make sure that, and if you have a response, that, you know, future commissions or councils would look at this as, you know, not just, hey, we need to just address the Public Works chapter and, and recognize that those other facilities are really critical to our circulation system, critical to, to those types of things.
If I could add on to that quickly, we did structure the plan around the Coastal Act policies. The Coastal Act regulates public works in a separate policy from coastal access amenities, including trails. There's also a definition of public works in the Coastal Act that does not specifically address trails. We also made that structuring decision based on that.
But I, I want to go back, you have a really good point. And so that we'll think about the kind of policy that might need to be considered somewhere in the plan, either in this chapter or maybe going back to the framework policies about the holistic approach to this. And frankly, the kinds of infrastructure you're talking about are, are one of the justifications for not widening Highway One. So we're, we're hanging our hat on it. So it's very interconnected, so I, it's a very well-made point. Thank you.
Okay, great. So with that, I will open the public hearing unless staff, you didn't have anything further in terms of next steps or anything. Okay. Well, open up the public hearing. I have two speaker cards here. Again, if, if you wish to speak on this item, please fill out a card. First speaker is Lenny Roberts.
Just talk to it, huh?
Just get right up in there.
Okay. All right, I know. The button's on. Okay. Lenny Roberts, Committee for Green Foothills.
If you could just speak right into the mic, Lenny, just for the benefit of the home public.
Trying to get it down. There we go. Okay, that's better. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Lenny Roberts, I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. I just, I just wanted to, I know this has been a prodigious amount of work to put this together and it's still somewhat in progress. It's hard to make informed comments when you're just first seeing the document and that's been kind of my dilemma with other presentations as well, but this one is, in particular is, is, you know, it's, it's a complex and technical and very important chapter. So we will want to have some thought up, put into it and then maybe have some further discussions. I think one of the, one of the most, I think, overarching concerns under the Coastal Act is in policy three, section, Coastal Act Section 30254, which is on page three dash three. Where existing or planned public works facilities can accommodate only a limited number, only a limited amount of new development, services to coastal dependent land use, essential public services and basic industries vital to the economic health of the region, state or nation. Public recreation, commercial recreation and visitors serving land uses shall not be precluded by other development. That's a really important statement. And as you, and it's, I really thank you for, Jill, for including the build-out numbers. This is, this is not, this is the, the build-out of the land use plan as you are allowing development in all those different categories. That is, that is definitely theoretical, but it's also a real number because if the zoning and the, and the policies allow X number, X intensity of development of so many acres and that's all allowed, then you have to really make sure that you are accommodating that. And so it will be interesting because we do have some capacities, some, some essential public services, sewer and highways, that can't accommodate that build-out. So as with the San Mateo County Midcoast Local Coastal Plan update, you have to look at ways to reduce the, that build-out and that, that has focused on the San Mateo County LCP, the Coastal Commission has focused it on reducing the residential build-out. And that, they've used some of Half Moon Bay's methods to do that, but, but the study that is supposed to actually come up with all those methods has not been completed yet. And that's the Coastside Comprehensive Transportation, CTMP, Comprehensive Transportation Management Plan or Connect the Coastside. It got stalled because the planner left and it is kind of starting again, I understand. But it's a very important document, but you've done a great deal of work that's going to help that get picked up again, I think. But it's still, we have to consider the fact that this is both the Midcoast and Half Moon Bay that share all of these facilities, share the infrastructure. And the build-out of the Midcoast, not just Half Moon Bay, is, is a part of the, a part of the puzzle. So let me see, there was another marker I had here. If you don't, if you can allow me to go a little longer? Okay. On the, oh, I know, the, the CCWD and, and water supply and water storage. I'm surprised by the statement in here that CCWD actually has a three-day supply of storage capacity, emergency storage capacity. And I would like, I'd like to be sure that you really verify that because years ago, when the, when the Crystal Springs Pipeline was being proposed, there was, there was a consultant, Phil Flint, who discussed the fact that they wouldn't even have to have a Crystal Springs Pipeline if they had adequate storage capacity on the, on the coast side and could increase local supply somewhat. They didn't need to have, they didn't need to be connected into the, the Hetchy system, which Baswa, Baswa has, you know, has to represent all the customers of the Hetch Hetchy system. The Hetch Hetchy system is going to, is going to suffer additional shortages over the, in the near, in the future. And I would say, assuming that it's not going to have anything more restrictive to the year, what was it, 3035, was that what you said? 34, 3034? I think that's questionable. With our drought periods and our, all the other demands on the, on that system, it has 2.6 million customers, I think, that Half Moon Bay is only a very small part of. It's, it, we're going to have severe water supply issues. So I think we should look at that and, and see whether the capacity, this, the emergency capacity, emergency storage for CCWD is really adequate for that kind of scenario. So I'll have some other comments.
Thank you.
I couldn't stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And definitely noted, it's difficult to make comments without being able to review the documents. So I know staff's eager to get your review and, and additional comments and there'll be lots of opportunities for that. Our next speaker is Mike Farrar.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. Regarding water, I would just like to say that in the, thank you very much for all your work on this. It is difficult, okay? I do know that in a prior regime of the city, the, there was an amendment, an LCP amendment sent up to the Coastal Commission to change the priority for affordable housing, to try and set a priority for it. And the Coastal Commission denied it. And in the black letter response, it was that everything at CCWD is already spoken for. If you want to make it a priority, you have to find a source of water. That was the response, black letter. So that's maybe the county wants to give some up or something mysterious is going on. That's, that's kind of what that history was. Of course, you know, that was back when it seems that the usage rate was higher. On page three dash 19, where you show the declining usage rate, that's significant, isn't that kind of like the time where Jerry Brown mandated a 25% reduction that I don't think is in effect anymore? And so I'm just a little concerned about what the, our projecting is if we're going to use that. We're going to transportation. We had this excellent city manager in 2005, 2006 area, and that was when the slide blew out, devil's slide. And we were stuck and there was a huge amount of traffic coming from the north. And she worked out a system with Main Street and 92, et cetera, et cetera, that I actually got over the hill faster than I did before the slide blew out. And I was living in Kehoe then, okay? They really made that whole thing work. And maybe you can find her and she can tell you where, what, how she came up with it. Because as soon as the slide opened up again, then the council decided they needed a new city manager, which I didn't understand at all. She works at the East Bay Parks, I think.
She's my neighbor in my office.
Yes, okay. She's, but she was very, very good and she did an excellent job.
Let's begin Deb Acker, correct?
The other last thing I, I have is that I think in your report where you talk about conditions going to the north are slightly better than conditions going to the south. I think if you run those conditions down to Miramontes Point Road, yeah, it's from 92 south, it's pretty easy in the morning. But from up to 92, it's just as bad as going north, if not worse. So I think maybe that data should be separated. And thank you. There's a lot here. Look forward to taking a closer look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got no other speaker cards. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, closing the public hearing and we'll bring it back over for a Planning Commission discussion. Is there any additional comments that the Planning Commission was, wishes to make at this time?
I just want to thank city staff for the work they did here. This is, there's a lot of, it's only 50 pages, but there's a lot of work that went into those 50 pages. It's a pretty compact document. I'd encourage my, my commissioners to read carefully through this. I think the major questions I had, I raised during our testimony today. I think the only other things that I have are just sort of general issues to consider. When you look at the policies as they're written today, we've, both for water and sewage, it's pretty well spelled out what the priority, like what the tiers are for allocating things. And I know we have other parts of our document that talk about priorities for development and so forth. And the question I have is, should we be thinking about infrastructure and public works in the context of like, where should priority development be? Should we be really emphasizing these things in the town center versus outside of the town center? And I ask that question because that's something that's a policy that's been set by city council. And I just, you know, I think there's, there's good reasons why. It may be difficult to put those policies into place, but there's nothing in the policies today in this chapter that explicitly talk about town center. So in terms of prioritization, if there are, I missed them in my very quick reading of it while we were here tonight. But I, I think this is very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddick, any additional comments?
Yes, thanks. In my quick perusal of this in the last hour, I, I did see the phrase "town center" a couple of times, but I don't retain what it is. But we'll, we, I, I agree with Commissioner Hernandez very much that we should, we should make sure that that's, that's reflected. Also, Commissioner Hernandez made a earlier point about what I think is sort of the elephant in the room, you know, this forecast of what the traffic on the coast side is likely to do in the next 20 years. And it's, it's not like we're ignorant of that or in denial about it, but it's, it's such a big problem that I definitely will go back right away to Chapter Five and look at the, what we say about alternative modes of transport and, and trails and such. I think, I think this really underscores and highlights, if, if we even need that, it underscores the importance of, of even small measures to do something to alleviate the, the traffic. The, the weekend traffic, I think it may be impossible to forecast, given the number of weekend climate refugees that we see on the, on the coast, you know, as the temperature gets up to 107 degrees in Stockton and... degrees in Stockton and more and more frequently these summers. So who can predict what will happen with that and what number of visitors seeking relief will flood out here? Nobody can blame those folks for doing that, right? And my only other question is, I was intrigued, Maz, when you said that recycled water might have the effect of reducing the burden on the water supply by up to 20 or 30%. That seems like, that'd be a pleasant surprise if that's possible, and that makes me wonder if we have the right energy around looking into that.
We can certainly consider more conversations as we meet with our counterparts at the different districts and looking at long-term planning for the treatment plant. It's been a topic of conversation, and it will continue to be a topic of conversation. I think my estimate might be a little high, but I think, you know, why not strive for that higher goal?
Just again, thank you for all the, this is an incredible amount of work you guys have put into this. And I don't have any other kind of questions at this point, although one thought is that in looking at this and then knowing kind of what the scope of what is needed to address some of the climate impacts that interact with these systems, what we're talking about are pretty, it's the pace of kind of planning and implementation and the scale of the types of projects that need to happen would really do need to pick up, and they need to be broader, more integrated, multi-benefit types of projects. I mean, that's what I see you describing, for example, with stormwater, when you're talking about a watershed approach, you know, and to help reduce the demand on our stormwater system, for instance. So I don't know if other land, excuse me, local coastal program updates or general plans have included some sort of analysis and policy around kind of the governance aspects that are affecting the capacity of the city staff to be able to move those projects forward. So that includes things like permitting and barriers and things like that that are, because, you know, this is what I work on all the time. And so whether you want to do restoration or you want to build a big building, you're still going to have to go through the different types of, you know, you have to work with different partners and you have to go through the different planning and review steps. What are, when you're trying to do a project to do green infrastructure that combines habitat with having a better stormwater management, where are the barriers? And is there a way to start, you know, actively address those? So if that means like coming up with a general permit for doing a certain, or doing certain studies that would then enable the city to move forward with the permitting, so they do a broader citywide look at something that then enables them to move forward more efficiently? Because the pace of what we need to get done has got to pick up, it's got to be a lot faster because we're already seeing the different changes in our rainfall patterns, for instance, and that are clearly affecting our public works infrastructure in particular. I just, I see it across probably, it's not just this chapter, obviously, but it definitely, this is a very clear one, where I see that becoming a bigger and bigger barrier. So that's a really broad thing I'm not expecting. I'm just pointing that out and then wondering if other cities have dealt with that in their local coastal program, actively thought about that and had a policy to try to develop, you know, address those issues.
You looking for an answer? Okay. Moving on. Commissioner Benjamin.
Thanks. I can think of one or two examples. The state has made it very streamlined to put in, for example, an electric vehicle charging station. I don't think it's quite ministerial, but it's pretty close. I don't think public hearings are required, for example, in some situations. I know that there are rules limiting restrictions on PV systems, on houses. I realize that's decimal dust compared to the infrastructure you're talking about. I'm just giving you some germs for ideas for thinking about how it might happen.
I'm definitely aware of that. I'm thinking more on a broader scale. I will also point out that when it comes to bigger projects that are needed to address some of these, those are the ones where the basic premise is to take no action is the lowest risk, and we've well gone past that, where it's no longer like that. And so for, like, it's easier for a charging station to streamline that process, whereas for some of the landscape scale-type projects that we are needing, or citywide, for instance, that's not going to, we don't have that kind of at our disposal to look at the projects in that respect. So I'm just saying that the frame of reference is perhaps one barrier.
So the precautionary principle takes on a different flavor here. It's no longer standing pat, it's moving forward, assuming something will happen if we don't, I see. So a couple of comments. First, let me say that this is the last, as you said, this is the last chapter of our subcommittee's draft on the LCP, and it has been a privilege. Thank you, Commission, for entrusting Rick and I with the chance to work on this draft. And thank you, staff, for being so generous and insightful and having the integrity to drill down and look at hard stuff. I'm grateful for that and the openness to the feedback that we're getting. I think that, just thinking back to the comments that I heard this evening, Mrs. Roberts' comments about the need to respond to the challenges of limits of infrastructure as mandated by the Coastal Act is a good example of what happens when you put together a puzzle and you have the last piece that you're putting in and it doesn't quite fit. And yes, we could, you know, we could, let's assume we get great improvements in our peak weather flows by recycling, and we achieve those goals, we still have a challenge in dry flows. And depending on how things evolve outside of our community, our decision-making, it may be that we, there's an uncertainty associated with the flows that are coming in from elsewhere. And maybe we don't like them, but ultimately, that's, you know, they're going to show up where we are, so we have to figure out how to deal with that. So, you know, the next step in this process is going to be taking a hard look at what our build-out looked like. And of course, instituting periodic reviews of that rather than, you know, the last time we did a build-out review was a very long time ago. And it's clear that that has to change, that we have to know how that works. And we have to recognize the uncertainty in our numbers. We're going to have to learn to get comfortable with random variables as opposed to discrete algebraic variables that we pretend we know the values when we don't. That's especially true, I think, in our traffic models. You know, it's clear from looking at the geography of our community that our traffic does have these two populations that feed in. One is a set of trips that originate and/or end in the city, and another set that came from outside the city and are leaving from somewhere else. We don't have, as you pointed out, we don't have much control over those. But they certainly, if we expect them to grow, and it sounds like that's what we're expecting, that, you know, our models are going to reveal, there may be changes, but most of the changes are going to be decimal dust compared to the big message that I think you've presented in these models, which is that we're saturated, we're going to be saturated. And if we, and we can't pave our way out of that saturation, we can't pave our way out of this. So another, that's another example of how we have to turn around and look at how we think development should evolve so that we can manage that finite precious capacity in a way that's careful. And I think my understanding is the traffic models, you know, they characterize something, some kind of generalized normal sort of circumstances. That's not pumpkin festival, that's not dream machines, that's not Christmas tree farm visits, it's not the hot summer days, well, maybe some summer days, or hot winter days.
You just excluded a quarter of the year.
Yeah, which is my point, which is that there's a lot, you know, those are not one-offs, right? And then there are the true one-offs, like the overturned big rig on Highway 92, or the traffic accident from somebody at Skyline. And we know that, you know, our citizens' disutility with the commute times spikes when that happens. And that's, you know, that's what they remember, that's what they experience, and it's an absolutely legitimate response. So finding some way for our traffic thinking to address that as well as addressing, you know, it doesn't mean we can fix it, but it means when we're planning what our capacities, how our demand for traffic will evolve, which is really what's happening in this document, we can reflect on the impact that our planning choices will have on those bad days. And to speak to Rick's comment about the location of development, you know, one set of trips that we talk about are trips that, one of those classes of traffic are the trips that originate in town or end in town. And just as we've sighted the Boys and Girls Club downtown next to the junior high school, which is brilliant because that means people can walk from the high school, the tweens can walk from there to the Boys and Girls Club. Those are, that's 700 trips or more a day that our citizens don't have to negotiate. You know, it may be that if we can make choices that allow us to densify the growth of our housing in that downtown area where there's shopping and there's adequate, you know, the library and all of the other resources that are valuable, we can be better, you know, it's better husbandry of the limited capacity that we have. And to the extent, you know, that cuts across the kinds of housing we want, whether it's affordable or market rate, right? So there's a notion in resource husbandry that prioritizing development in the downtown area makes better use of our resources. Now I leave it to the experts to tell me how to dovetail that with other requirements that we may need to respect and make good use of opportunities that might be available. But I certainly appreciate the intention that you bring when you say, how can we prioritize that to some extent? I understand that that's not the be-all and end-all, but it's worth pointing out. I think, other than just saying, I could not agree more with the comments of my colleagues, that we are indebted to you for the work you have done on this project. And I personally have seen how hard you work. So thanks so much for that.
Thank you. Well, I'll just start out by saying, you know, anytime I mention to Deb Acker that Mike Ferrera has said something nice about her during her term as city manager here, she's always very pleased and pleasantly surprised. So I'll be sure to mention that and see what suggestions she has for 92 and Highway 1. So I'm just struck by the fact that, you know, the Bay Area is projected to grow by 2.3 million people over the next 25 years. And I think that's just, you know, that's a fact that we're going to see an increasing portion of that wanting to come to the coast. And so the traffic and circulation and impacts on all of our public works infrastructures is a reality, and it's daunting to think about how we address it, particularly in relation to circulation. So that's why I think, you know, really looking at our circulation network beyond the traditional, you know, vehicle-centered circulation system is really important, and I know we've done that. And I know we've done that work, and I think, you know, if there's a way to make that explicit in this chapter, that that circulation network is multimodal for bicycles, pedestrians, vehicles, you know, if you want to toss in an urban gondola going from Kenyatta College over to the coast, you know, that would always be fun as well, but just a side note. But I think, you know, the scale of the investment is so huge and daunting that I think focusing in on those real implementable projects, the, you know, like I say, the bicycle, the trails projects, the East Side Connector Trail, you know, those types of facilities that we know we can fund, we can pursue and get grant funds, and we can actually implement them, I think is really important. And so I think we need to definitely make a focus on that. You know, I consider myself fortunate, and I live south of the 92 and Highway 1 intersection, so I don't feel like I feel the traffic crunch as much as those who live north. But I'd certainly be, you know, concerned about any big projects that are going on north of Frenchman's Creek that really increase that demand along Highway 1 there, and certainly any big projects that would increase the, you know, the demand on the city to invest in improving infrastructure to accommodate those types of projects. So I think that's, you know, Rick's comments about sort of priority development areas and, you know, downtown, I think resonate with me in relation to that. I think it's really important to focus our investments where we can, where we can really see the most benefits from them. Other than that, I think, you know, thank you again for all the good work on here. I think it'll be good to view this chapter in the totality of everything else and see how it all works together and how it speaks together. And I think that's going to be an important part of the message as we take it forward. So with that, take it back to next steps.
We'll get there eventually. Thank you for your support on this, your input. Thank you. We certainly appreciate that no one has had time to review the document. It's not the intent, of course. We're trying to give you some guidance about what you're going to see and invite everybody who's interested in getting more information from staff to come to City Hall and work with us. We're happy to do that. We've been running really hard on these numbers, and so they're all fresh in our minds. So this is a really good time to come and chat with us about what went into each component of it. One thing that did not come out in, that I skipped over in the presentation was something that was really important for the subcommittee. The sustainability and resilience component of the land use plan as a whole, and it certainly came out in public comment about being concerned, for example, if the water projections were using drought water rates, we've got to be careful about that. And so, and I want to say, we do have some more recent rates and projections around that. But that's exactly the point, again, of what Commissioner or Vice Chair Benjamin was talking about in terms of rain, and it just crosses over all of the different categories. We were calling it in our subcommittee meetings, this concept of having some freeboard, having a safety margin, that the intent of this plan is to not max all the way out to the limit of the limit of a system when we know that there's so many unforeseen things that can happen, either with storms or sewer capacity because we have so many visitors, or some kind of a water line failure and we need the storage, or something in the circulation system, a big horrible accident. And sometimes those things all happen at the same time because they are caused by the same implementing event. So we hope you notice that when you read the chapter, and if it's not strong enough or you find ways where it could be improved, that's or you find ways where it could be improved, that's something that we'd love to hear about. I do want one more little content comment, and just appreciated Commissioner Reddick's note about how it gets really hard to model some things. And in terms of expectation management, especially around the traffic modeling for weekend traffic, we're never going to satisfy everyone's experience as to what that is like, and the models don't handle this type of traffic very well. One piece of feedback that staff has is, we're not sure that you need any more evidence in the record about how bad it is, so we'll model what we think you need, but we think you also already really understand it well, and we have documentation around it that really serves the purpose of you thinking about the plan. So I hope that's helpful a little bit. And then Commissioner Polger's question about barriers for certain kinds of large-scale, big kind of green infrastructure restoration types of projects. Our deputy city attorney tells me that she's seen some things around the edges of that. We also know, you know, there's SECO exemptions for restoration projects. It's a little bit harder in the coastal zone to run around a coastal development permit, but we'll see what's out there, and I think we understood your question. So next steps, we're going to post this document on our website tomorrow. Brittany's going to finish a policy comparison table for this chapter. Policy comparison tables have been prepared for all of the other chapters, and we're going to make sure that they're posted along with the chapters. Folks like to see the 1996 policies and how they are aligning or not, where they're changing and evolving in this draft, so that will all go up. We're suggesting a 45-day review period. This chapter is about 50 pages, and we think folks can get through it. This is kind of a SECO document timeline. All the rest of the work has been out for, some of it, for really a long time, so we hope that's adequate. If it isn't, we'll let you know, we'll be here, and we'll see if we need more time. And then we would like to come back on September 24th for a study session where we would expect people to be able to give more substantive comments on any of the chapters. It will be opened up at that point. And then we're trying to plot, of course, for working our way to a revised draft and keeping city council informed about what we're up to. So when there is that transition period of public hearing with you, and it moves to them that they know what you've been up to, and they're familiar with the intentions of the document, and they can continue to provide some guidance as they have been when we check in with them from time to time. We don't go past September 24th in dates because we need to see how folks are doing, and that's just one of the things that we think is important. If you want, we'll try to dial in a bit more of a schedule on September 24th, and I hope that helps.
Just real quick, and then we'll get to, so the study sessions, the September 24th study session, is that just on the public works chapter, or is that on the document as a whole?
So we think it's probably hard to just talk about one chapter, so we're going to open it up, but if you think it's better to focus it, we can, or maybe we could have a two-part session where we focus on public works and then have a second aspect to the session where people can talk about anything. There's different ways of doing it. We can talk about it later if you want to think about it.
I don't have a strong opinion. I was just looking for clarification. I think it makes sense to look at the document as a whole, but...
Now that it's finally there for you, we, yeah.
Commissioner Polger.
I just wanted to clarify one thing I heard in there, in the comments I was making about the, kind of, what are the barriers to doing some of these bigger projects? I just want to be a little bit careful because I don't see that getting around the CDP is something would be an advantageous thing. So, yeah, I actually think that's a very important aspect of review of a large project. So I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't want to make it seem like that would be something that would be a goal, so.
I was being a little facetious, I'm sorry. Okay.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the additional comment about resiliency, and I don't know how, I thought I had notes of what I wanted to comment on, but I appreciate the comment you made. I think that, I probably speak for Rick as well, when we were thinking about this, that sort of is the ramifications, it's the reason that we operate in a space of uncertainty. That's why we use random variables rather than discrete algebraic variables when we think about what's going to happen and common mode failures, when we think about, you know, if we're going to have a fire and we need an emergency warning system, and we need fire flow, and we need people to get out of certain parts of Highway 1, you know, all of that is initiated by a single event, and it has ramifications for all, for so many of our infrastructure systems. And so what it means to be resilient is more, it is systemic, it is systematic, it is not isolated to one infrastructure system or another. When you're building products in high tech, you build use cases as a way of spurring one's thinking about this and say, suppose this happens, how does our infrastructure system respond? And it might be a worthwhile exercise to do that as part of our, and it may well be that you already are. And it doesn't mean that we know we can handle every case, because if you design so that you don't ever fail, you have overdesigned your system, right? But you can decide where your failure points would be and make sure you understand them and that they're balanced, that by shifting a few dollars from the improvements or resilience in one system to another, maybe you get, you can delay the breaking point of your multi-dimensional system a little bit more. That was the, and in particular with respect to, you know, sewer and water and roadway and communications, it's easy to see places where they interact, but I'm sure that there are others that are much more subtle. So thank you so much for reminding me to make that comment.
Okay, thank you. Back to staff. Nothing more? Okay, so with that, we can close the study session and move on from this public hearing item and go to the director's report.
So we saw you last week, so we'll spare you. Enjoy your little break and get ready to read a bunch, though. We're going to see you again on August 27th. We'll try to have a packet come to you several weeks ahead with the, there's two initial studies. One is with the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. It has an initial study mitigated negative declaration. That's the bigger piece of it. The Bike Pad Master Plan has been out and about for a while. I think most of you have had your hands on it, but not all of you, so we'll try to get you something soon. There's another project with an initial study. It's a house, it's a single-family home. It's much, much less complicated than the Bike Pad Master Plan study, which is more of a programmatic SECO analysis. So you'll have that coming your way, and I will skip all the rest of it since we saw you just recently. Thank you.
Very good. Any planning commission communication, Mr. Park? See none? I have one thing I'd like to mention just for fun.
Tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., the goats and sheep are moving from the old landfill south of Papa Beach to the railroad right-of-way, and it's always a fun event. Everyone's invited to come watch.
Thanks.
Not a bad idea.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I get a motion to conclude our meeting?
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Conclude.
So...